Good to go?
Mm hmm.
Yes. All right, thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Maryland Insurance Administration's virtual public hearing on the 2023 ACA rate filings. My name is Kathleen Bahrain and I service the Maryland Insurance Commissioner. The purpose of today's hearing is to address the 2023 Affordable Care Act health insurance rate filings submitted by those Maryland insurers participating in the individual non-Medica and small group markets. Those filings which are before me for consideration were made in May and are under review by the administration's actuaries. This year's hearing again is on the Zoom webinar platform. The hearing is being recorded and will be posted to the MIA's website along with any material submitted. As a matter of housekeeping for those persons who are on the panel and who can be seen and heard, I would ask you to keep your microphone on mute unless you're speaking and to turn off your camera if you are not presenting. Now, as we get started, let me take a moment to introduce the Maryland Insurance Administration staff participating in today's hearing. So first, Corey Boone, Chief of Staff.
Good morning.
Brad Boban, our Chief Actuary.
Morning.
Senior Actuary Adam Zimmerman.
Hello, good morning.
And Senior Actuary Henry Nakoma.
Hello, good morning.
And Craig I, who you've met, our Director of Communication.
Hello and welcome.
After my opening remarks, our Chief Actuary Brad Boban will provide a high-level summary of the filings together with an overview of key considerations in the administration's review of those filings. We will then hear from the insurers that have submitted filings. Representatives of each carrier will have the opportunity to explain their filings and the changes sought, and the MIA will ask questions about the filings. We will then take comments from interested parties, starting with those who signed up to speak in advance. I appreciate that some of you joining us today may not have had the opportunity to sign up to speak, but we would still like to hear from you if time and technology allow. If you look on your screen at the bottom, you will see the chat option. And if you wish to share your views, please type your name and your affiliation in the chat with the phrase "I wish to comment." Then when it's your turn to speak, Mr. I will give you access. Please keep in mind that the purpose is in fact to comment and not to ask questions of the carriers. Those questions will be asked by the MIA staff, most particularly our actuaries. If you are for some reason unable to access that function or joining us by phone, you can still provide your comments. We want to hear from you. We will provide a slide at the end with contact information, and that contact information is also available on our website, so it'll tell you how to provide your comments to us. It's important to note that Maryland's rate review laws provide that only those health insurance rates that are approved by the Insurance Commissioner may be charged to policyholders. And before approval, all filings go through a comprehensive analysis of the carrier's statistics and assumptions. And public comments, as I've indicated, are a very important part of that review process. My job is to disapprove or modify any proposed rates that appear to be inadequate or excessive in relation to the benefits offered or that are unfairly discriminatory. More information on the rate review process can be found on the MIA's website, insurance.maryland.gov. The Maryland Insurance Administration anticipates announcing the approved health insurance rates by Friday, September 16. Now, as Mr. Boban will discuss in more detail, the overall average rate increases requested for 2023 are higher than they have been in the last several years. In the individual non-Medica market, the overall average rate increase request is 11%. And in the small group market, the overall average rate increase request is 10%. There are several factors that relate to the request to increase rates, including increased health claim cost trends associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. It is the job of the MIA's actuaries to dig into those numbers and to examine all of the related historic data as well as the cost projections for 2023 as we evaluate those requests. I can assure you that that work is in process and that this hearing is part of that process. And with that, let me turn this over to our Chief Actuary, Mr. Boban, who will discuss the rate requests in more detail. Brad?
Thank you, Commissioner. Craig, you're gonna run the slides for me, correct? Yes, perfect. Thank you very much. If you could please go to the next slide. Thank you. So, as the Commissioner said, the rate increase filed this year is higher than we have seen in recent years. For 2023 in the individual market, the average rate increase is 11%. That compares to a 2.1% average increase that was approved last year. And the three years before that, we approved double-digit negative increases as a result of the implementation of the reinsurance program. And you know, while this 11% is, you know, not the best news, just to put it in perspective, in 2018, the year before the reinsurance program was implemented, the MIA approved an average of a 32% increase across carriers. And, you know, that level of increase was filed again for 2019 prior to reinsurance. So, you know, well, this is not a great number. It is also not the kind of number we saw before reinsurance. There is variance in that increase. The averages go from 7.2% for the lowest carrier to plus 25.9% for the highest carrier. That latter number is obviously something that we are closely looking at and examining. The good news is that enrollment has been growing in this market. Over the past, you know, two or three years, there have been significant enrollment growth. This past year saw enrollment growth of almost 24,000. That reflects an 11% increase to 241,273 members. This is bringing the individual ACA marketplace back close to its peak of 246,000 back in 2018. Part of that, a good, a large driver of that has been the enhanced subsidies that have been available under the American Rescue Plan. The American Rescue Plan back in April or May of 2021 did a lot of things related to COVID, but part of that was to give two years of enhanced APTC, Advanced Premium Tax Subsidies, for the individual market. And that has helped significantly lower rates for every subsidized member in the marketplace as well as extend subsidies above 400% for people that previously were ineligible for subsidies. Unfortunately, the American Rescue Plan subsidies are set to expire at the end of 2023 under current law. Congress has been talking about extending it and introducing bills to extend it for well over a year now, but at this point, it has not been extended. And, you know, as we are getting closer to our deadline to approve, you know, right now, all of these rate increases assume that subsidies are going to be extended, and we are asking carriers to provide an alternative set of rate increases that is going to reflect American Rescue Plan subsidies expiring. The expectation is this is going to cause anti-selection, that people with subsidies are going to get very large increases, and that's going to cause the healthier people with subsidies to lapse and worsen the morbidity of the pool, leading to higher rate increases. Another large part of uncertainty with this year's rate filing and the morbidity projections are due to two things. One is the IRS has proposed regulations to fix the family glitch. The family glitch is where a person, if an employee has an offer of affordable coverage from their employee, that disqualifies the whole family from receiving premium tax credits, even if the employer's cost for family coverage is unaffordable. And so, you know, it's called a glitch because it was not an intentional feature of it, but the way the regulations were initially drafted, this is how the affordability standards were implemented. And the IRS is trying to fix that, and that's due to take place in 2023. And that will, you know, expand the subsidy to a new class of people. People who, you know, have one spouse with affordable coverage but whose family does not have affordable coverage. And then there is also the Medicaid unwinding to take into account. So, since the COVID pandemic began, there has been a freeze on Medicaid disenrollment, a continuous coverage requirement, and nobody has been disenrolled from Medicaid, regardless of if their, you know, income has increased and made them ineligible. This is in effect until the COVID public health emergency ends. Right now, the best expectations are that it is probably going to end at the end of 2022. And going into 2023, all the states will be required to start disenrolling people from Medicaid, those who are no longer eligible. And, you know, a lot of people whose income has increased too high for Medicaid are expected to come on to the individual exchange. They should be eligible for APTC in lieu of Medicaid. And so, these three factors, you know, the ARPA subsidies, the family glitch, and Medicaid unwinding, this really makes this year's morbidity projection very difficult to project for the carriers. This is probably the most dynamic pool since, you know, the ACA was first implemented back in 2014, when insurance companies had to project, you know, the impact of going from an underwritten individual product to a guaranteed individual product. So, you know, these are all large uncertainties being dealt with in these filings. And then there's also all the uncertainty along with COVID, which is not, you know, which applies about the individual and small group markets. So I'll talk about that in a couple of slides. Craig, if you could please go on to the next slide. So, in the ACA small group market, the average rate increase is about 10%. And, you know, the range here is a little narrower than the small group, than the individual market. Carriers are requesting anything from 3% to 12.6%. You know, this does vary by quarter. Unlike the individual market, small group rates generally change on a quarterly basis. Every carrier has a prefiled trend that is included with these filings, and the renewal increase for each quarter is slightly different. You know, the small group rate increase is up a little bit from recent years as well. While there has been no reinsurance program in the small group market, in general, small group rates have been increasing, you know, pretty consistently in the low single digits. If you look at the four years before this year, you know, the small group increases all ranged from 2% to 5% in those years. So that's, you know, sub-trend level increases. And so, you know, this year is an anomaly for small group as well. Something consistent across the board, you know, this is largely driven by, you know, trend, relatively high trend expectations, and by, you know, 2021 claims coming in somewhat higher than expected. But complicating that is obviously COVID. And so, you know, we are digging into that and analyzing the historic data to make sure that COVID has been accounted for when setting trends and analyzing what a long-term trend might be. In the small group market, enrollment has been declining slightly. There was a loss of about 6,000 members from 2021 to 22. That's a 2.3% decline. And then the last ACA marketplace is the dental individual standalone market. The average increase for 2023 is 4.5% in this market. And, you know, this market has had extremely stable rates in recent years. The rate increases in general have been 0% for most carriers. The average increase for last year was 0.2%. And this year, you still see a range from carriers, with some carriers decreasing their rates, minus 4.5% is the lowest rate request, with one carrier increasing rates but by 9.4%. And the dental market has also seen extremely strong enrollment growth. Last year, enrollment grew by 21,467 members. That's a 29% increase from the year before. You know, we're up to 40% of individual medical plan purchasers are now adding a dental plan on. And so, you know, in general, the dental market has grown, you know, more than 50% since 2019, when the reinsurance program was first implemented. And while reinsurance dollars do not directly apply to the dental market, you know, the fact that people are paying significantly less for their medical plans seems to have freed up some money for them to be able to purchase a dental plan as well. So if you could go into the next slide, Craig, please. All right, so this slide goes over COVID and some high-level data that we've gathered from the carriers. Everything on here represents an aggregated picture. We've taken data from all the carriers, individual and small group, and combined them. In general, from the top bullet, COVID-related claims have accounted for about 2.5% of claims in 2021. This varies by carriers pretty significantly, you know, from 1% to 7% of claims depending on carrier are attributable to COVID. There are four main categories of COVID spending that we've broken down here. The first, and by far most costly on a permanent basis, is hospitalization. On average, a COVID hospitalization has cost $38,000 per hospitalized member. This is ICU and acute hospitalization combined. ICU is significantly more expensive than this, but for sake of brevity, I've combined them here. In general, in the experience period, about four out of every 1,000 members were hospitalized for COVID. And the MIA's expectation, and in general, the carriers seem to agree with this, is that we have reached our peak in COVID hospitalizations and that in 2023, there are not going to be as many hospitalizations as in 2021. And so, our expectation is that hospitalization should be reduced to the level of about 1 to 2 per 1,000 members. And so, that's the one aspect of COVID that definitely seems to be decreasing in cost in the future. The second category is outpatient treatment. People that were diagnosed with COVID and received treatment but were not hospitalized. There were about 60 per 1,000 members that fall in this category, and the average cost was about $375. And carriers have pointed to some potential for increased costs in this category due to the pronunciation of Paxlovid and Legevrio. I apologize if I slaughtered those names. But those are the brand name of two oral antiviral medications that have received provisional FDA approval and are expected to really take off in 2022, going into 2023. Pfizer is estimating they're going to have $22 billion in sales of Paxlovid for 2022. So this is something that carriers and us are definitely keeping an eye on. And this could be, you know, an increase in the outpatient cost. Obviously, if these outpatient spending eliminates inpatient hospitalizations, you can spend a lot on those oral antivirals and still come out ahead on the COVID treatment section. Then the next cost is the vaccinations. On average, COVID vaccines ran our carriers about $40 per vaccine, and the overall utilization was about 800 vaccines per 1,000 members. In general, some carriers have pointed to a expectation that these costs will be lower in the future because the 2021 is when most subscribers received multiple vaccinations. And in 2023, only boosters are expected. Offsetting that is that in 2021, the federal government paid for a lot of the vaccinations. You know, there were vaccination sites being ran where people did not have to present, prevent, present insurance cards, and they were given a free dose of a vaccine regardless of their status. And in general, those have been shutting down across the nation, and the expectation is that in 2023, anybody who wants a vaccine will be going through their insurance. There will not be free vaccine sites available. And so that has the potential for increased utilization. And then finally, there is testing. During the experience period, PCR testing, the testing that takes place at the lab, was the only type of testing being paid for. On average, these tests cost about $70 a test, and the utilization was about $1,700 per 1,000 members. So each person was on average getting 1.7 tests over the course of the year. And in this category, you know, in general, there is the expectation that there is going to be reduced PCR testing in the future, but that are offsetting that, and maybe more than offsetting that, are the over-the-counter antigen tests. As of the beginning of 2022, back in January, regulations by CMS were issued that requires carriers to reimburse members for over-the-counter tests. It's up to $12 per test, up to eight tests per month, which is 96 tests per member per year. And while nobody expects, you know, the utilization to be the full 96 per member per year, at $12 a test, you would need to average about 11 tests a year to equal the PCR testing cost in 2021. And so, you know, if one thinks that utilization of over-the-counter tests is going to be more than the one test per member per month, then this testing category could potentially increase in the future. So, we are looking at all these different components, you know, for each of the carriers as we're trying to, you know, set a projected premium for 2023. And then beyond these direct COVID impacts, you know, COVID has significantly distorted the data that we're working with. That the 2020 claims data, if you remember the last year's hearing, there was a very large reduction in non-COVID claims that occurred in, you know, mainly April and May, but going into months after that because of lockdowns associated with COVID, because of hospitals delaying all non-essential procedures. So there was a huge reduction in utilization, and that is now impacting analysis, like trend analysis, where if you just analyze raw trends, you show a large increase between 2020 and 2021, but that's driven by that artificial decrease in claims in 2020. So that needs to be adjusted for when we're analyzing trend. And so, you know, in general, COVID has permeated these filings in a lot of different ways. And this is just a sample of what we are looking at as we evaluate this. Craig, if you could please go on to the next slide. All right, so I put together this slide as an illustration of the premium impact of the American Rescue Plan subsidies expiring. And so, on the left-hand side of this chart, I have the before and after ARPA subsidies for people that are either between ages of 0 and 17 or 35-plus. These people do not qualify for our state young adult subsidy. It's the bulk of the membership are in this category. So, you know, starting at the top row, right now, under ARPA, there is a $0 premium available, that if somebody is 150% FPL, selects the second lowest-cost silver plan, they can get that for $0. If these ARPA subsidies expire, under the original ACA subsidies, 150% FPL is expected to pay $67. And so they're going to see a $67 increase. If you go down this chart, you can see, you know, the dollar amount of increases increases up to 300% FPL, that's the hardest hit cohort. And on a dollar basis, they're going to see a $123 increase in premium. And something to note is that these numbers are independent of the rate increase that we approve for the unsubsidized rates, that for the second lowest-cost silver plan, the federal subsidies adjust up or down depending on what we approve. And they are always going to leave this amount left over for the member to pay for the second lowest-cost silver plan. If a person takes their subsidies and uses it to buy a different plan, you know, either a silver plan that's not the second lowest cost, or gold plan or a bronze plan, then their increase is going to depend on both what we approve for unsubsidized rates and on what happens with the federal subsidy. But for people taking that second lowest-cost silver, you know, it doesn't matter if we approve a 0 or a 10, this is the rate increases they're going to see. And then, you know, on the right is the young adult subsidy. And the thing I'll note is that for the lower income levels, our young adult subsidy will step in and soften the hit from ARPA expiring to 150% FPL. Those young adults will only see an increase from $0 to $26 instead of $0 to $67. And that's because, you know, right now, the young adult subsidy for the state was designed before ARPA subsidies went into place, and there was some overlap between the two. And so, for 2022, you know, the state subsidy program isn't costing as much as we expected it to because ARPA is spending some of the money for us. And if ARPA is to expire, those people will be sheltered somewhat from the increase. But, you know, the higher income levels from 250% plus, you can see, you know, it's the same $123 at 300% that someone will pay. It will be a higher percentage increase because they are starting from a lower amount because they get both the federal subsidy and the state subsidy, but the dollar amount for those higher incomes will be higher. But in general, as you can see, all of these percent increases are pretty high, and these are going to be difficult increases for consumers to bear. So if Congress lets ARPA subsidies expire, you know, this is a very bad situation, and there's going to be a lot of really tough decisions being made by members about whether they can afford these new premiums with lower subsidies. And so this is why this is such an important part of the overall rate filing projection, because while we don't directly set rates for these subsidized members, whether or not the younger and healthier people will stay in the pool, the people that have come in over the last couple of years will stay in the pool has a big impact on where the overall health status of the pool is expected to end up in 2023. Next slide, please, Craig. Other key assumptions that we're looking at, you know, the first one is trend. I touched on this before, you know, COVID is distorting the trend analysis and, you know, requiring us to make an additional adjustment to trend in order to, you know, extract meaning from the data. The raw data is showing a larger increase than is, you know, actually an underlying claims trend. Morbidity, in general, you know, the American Rescue Plan notwithstanding, morbidity had been improving over the past several years in the individual marketplace. With early 2022 data, we're seeing more of a mixed picture, with some carriers reporting a continued improvement in morbidity and some carriers reporting that morbidity seems to have bottomed out and that new entrants are now actually a little bit higher morbidity than existing entrants. So we're continuing to look closely at all of the data that we can gain for that. It's always difficult to estimate morbidity for new members. You know, we don't have a full years of claims. We have very limited or no claims data for these new members. And so, you know, it is always a difficult analysis to do for the new entrants. Then we have risk adjustment. CMS just released 2021 final risk adjustment numbers a little over a week ago on a, a little over a week ago on June 30th. And, and then shortly after the rate filing deadline, um, they had changed the risk adjustment coefficients for 2023. There had been one set of coefficients that were drafted back in January and all of the carriers updated their modeling with those draft coefficients, but CMS decided not, not to make all the changes that they had proposed and, and issued new coefficients, final ones on, on May 6th, which was, you know, four days after our, our rate filing deadline. So all of the carriers need to update their risk adjustment modeling to take into account the, these two updates. Um, so, so they're in the progress of, of doing that. And, you know, th- this is expected to have a, a mixed impact on premiums, going to slightly increase premiums for some carriers, slightly decrease premiums for other carriers. Risk adjustment is a zero sum game in, in the individual market. The, the, the transfers into the risk adjustment program has to equal the transfers out. And, and so on average across all carriers, it's zero. Same thing in the small group market. Um, and, and then finally, we have reinsurance. And, and you know, we, we now have three years of, of state reinsurance actuals and, and, you know, we are giving more scrutiny to carriers risk adjust, or reinsurance projections this year to, to make sure that they, they look consistent with those actuals. And, and, and another thing that has become more meaningful this year is that in addition to the state reinsurance program, wh- which is a reminder, the state reinsurance program covers 80% of claims between $20,000 and $250,000. So these are high claims, but not ultra-high claims. Um, but there's also a federal reinsurance program that, that is, is part of the risk adjustment program, part of the federal risk adjustment program is to reinsure the, the high cost members and, and they define high cost as a million dollars. So, so that's really, you know, ultra-high cost, you know, for, for the state reinsurance program, you have five or six percent of members hitting 20,000. For, for a million dollars, you're talking about, you know, one one-hundredth of a percent of, of members, very few. A handful of members hit a million dollars a year. Um, and, and in general, in, in past years, this has been running for four years, there's been very moderate receivables from our carriers. Um, you know, some carriers receive zero, some carriers receive a couple hundred thousand dollars of payments, but in general, the, the receipts have been less than or equal to what they have to pay in. All the carriers have to pay in a, a percent of premium for this federal high-risk pool. It, it's point 31% premium in, in the individual market, point 49 in, in the small group market. But, but for the first year, we have some carriers receiving very large payables from, from the federal government. Um, one carrier is getting a $7.8 million payment, another carrier is getting a $1.8 million payment. Um, and, and so we are looking at the data now and making sure that that portion of claims, which is going to be insured by the federal government, is not also getting built into premiums. Um, and, and so Craig, if you could go to the next slide, please? Um, so that's, that's the main part of my presentation. Um, this is our contact info. Phil, 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 please feel free to contact me or Craig with any additional questions you have about these rate filings, about the rate filing process. Um, you know, w- we will be sure to respond to you and, and just anybody that has public comments on these rate filings, just know that there is still time. You have until Friday, August 12th to submit comments on our rate review website. Um, if you go to that URL here, you can get copies of, of every company's actuarial memorandum. You can read through all the details for your specific carriers and you can submit comments specific to, to any one carrier. Um, and, and you know, we, we read and review all of the comment that comes in. So please, if anybody has anything to say, submit something by August 12th. And, and with that, I think I can turn it over, um, back to the commissioner.
Thank you, Brad. I appreciate that. And to respond to the question in the chat, yes, this presentation will be made available, will be on our website. So I think, um, at this point, the next step is to give each carrier an opportunity to speak to its rate filing. And let's start with Aetna, and I think that's Mr. Schneider. So if Mr. Schneider, if you would unmute, yep, got your camera on, and then I would invite the MIA actuaries to all either keep or put your cameras on because that will give you the opportunity if you have questions for Mr. Schneider. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? Am I on? Okay. All right. So we are, um, I know a lot of the discussions Ben and Will be about the individual market, but just to, to start off with, Edna, we're only in the small group market. So, um, so first, good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to present some information on those filings. We filed for two entities. The HMO entity is Aetna Health Incorporated, or what we call AHI sometimes, and the PPO entity is Aetna Life Insurance Company or ALEC. And we have about, at this point, 1,900 members, um, in, in Maryland, under our, our, under small group that are covered as of May of this year. So I want to start off noting that the, the numbers I talked about, they're going to be average rate changes as probably everyone's will be. I mean, the exact change that anyone gets is going to depend on a bunch of factors like related to plan design and then the employer employee characteristics. To develop the rates, we, um, as typical, we looked at 2021 experience, which has been some discussion of in the prior comments, and then we projected into, into the, the, the plan year of 23. Uh, the main, the main drivers of the changes are the, uh, there's a few, there's a few, which are again, pretty, pretty standard. The medical costs are rising, the plan design, their plan design changes. And you'll see in a moment, we have a few new plans in, in the market now, or we will next year. Um, the morbidity estimates of what that's going to look like. And then kind of other catchall, which, of which the most important thing is how the claims experience in the path has differed from what we thought it was going to be. So I'll talk about each of those in a little bit more detail now. For HMO, our average increase is about 12.5%, and for PPO, it's a little over 8, 8.1%. And when you combine them together, it's 10.5%. So for 2023, we've filed nine plans for HMO and 12 for, for PPO. Three of each of those, three HMO and three PPO are both on and off exchange and the remaining plans are, are only offered off exchange. So, um, as, as I mentioned e- e- earlier, the, the, this, this is a weighted average of the expected year-over-year changes. So the, the, the things that, that will depend, determine the exact change are the, the, um, which benefit plan, the, when the contract renews, because it varies by quarter, it will vary by quarter, the age and family size for each employee, and then what the employer may contribute as well. For the first quarter consumers, which is the year over year, um, it, there's a change of 14.1 for HMO and 10.9 for PPO. And the, the reason for that is that we had submitted an, uh, inter-year adjustment to some of our rates. And so those, those are a little bit higher for first quarter than for some of the rest of the year. And so now let me talk about each of the drivers in a little detail. The medical and pharmacy costs go up because there, the providers raise their prices and also members getting more, more carried here. They tend to, the utilization goes up. Um, our projected trend is, um, is 8.9 in total, which is 8% for medical only, and the, the drug trend is a little higher at 12.5%. The changes to the cost sharing were also made to comply with actual, with AV requirements, which went up and also to make the plans more attractive to consumers. And on average, this actually increased the costs of the plans by 1.9% for HMO and 5.1 for PPO with an average of about 3.3%. Our estimate of average population health and the expected risk transfers for, for the ACA products have changed, have also changed as every year, you know, the estimates will change for that. And on average, that's a little higher than we'd thought before, and we think those are going to be worth, um, 3.9% in total. Um, and then the last component, which is, um, al- also significant this year is that the, the other items contribute to actually a decrease of 5.6%. And that includes claims experience emerging differently than what we'd anticipated before. So the, the year-over-year trend from 20 to 21 COVID-adjusted was a little bit better than, than we had thought. So, um, th- those are my comments on the actual development of the rates. We also want to update and just point out some of the other things that is doing to keep premiums affordable. We're developing new agreements, arrangements and partnerships with healthcare providers that base the compensation on the quality and not just the amount of services. We are creating medical management program that addressed the health issues for members earlier and improved the outcomes, so therefore also reduced the costs. And we're working to reduce the ability of outer network providers to collect unreasonably excessive payments for services they provide. So we're doing all those things in addition to, uh, to, you know, attempting to, to price correctly. So th- that's, that concludes my, my, my comments. So again, thanks for the opportunity to present and, um, I'll take any questions from the actuaries or anyone if, if you have any.
Stephen, I, I have a question. Um, so you mentioned a plus 1.9% change to rates due to the change to AV requirements. Um, is, is it correct that that would be the, the change to the, the lower end of the de minimis ranges?
Yeah, yes.
So, so just, just for, for the sake of everybody in the audience, the, you know, the, a, a, the AV target of, of say 70% for silver level has a de minimis range where you can be above or below that and still be in, in, in range for the metal level. And, and for the last several years, the de minimis range has been minus five to plus two. So a, a silver plan can be anywhere from 65 to 72%. But starting in 2023, that's been narrowed back to minus two to plus two. So now the lowest silver plan can be a, a 68%. Um, and, and so that, that would mean that these members now are, are going to be having lower cost shares in, in exchange for that 1.9% upward pressure, correct? That you've had the lower cost shares to, to get into range and, and that's what is causing the upward premium pressure.
Yes, that's right. That's right. Cause you know, we, we like, I think many carriers, you know, to, to keep the rates as low as we can, will tend to lean toward the lower end. We're always going to have plans down in there and that's, those are going to be the most affordable. So that's where the members will tend to end up. I mean, it's not an absolute rule. So when those floors go up, it does have a meaningful impact on those of the most popular plans.
All right. Th- thank you for that. Um, I didn't have any additional questions this time. Um, Henry, anything from you?
I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I think you're muted.
If I don't do that at least once a meeting, okay. Um, so Mr. Berry, anticipating that he was text on the agenda, uh, will walk us through the CareFirst Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, rate increases requests.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, my name is Pete Berry. I'm chief actuary for CareFirst. Today I'll be walking through the individual and small group ACA rate filings for 2023, uh, for two entities, our HMO and our PPO, and also, uh, address some of the comments that Brad made about, uh, ARPA and as well as COVID. So I'll start with individual and we'll start with individual blue choice, which is where the bulk of our membership is. Um, this year, CareFirst is filed for an 11.2% rate increase. As we look at the drivers of that, uh, we haven't really seen, uh, trends spike like we have in small group, and I'll talk about that later. I think one of the key drivers there is, is as we talked about last August, is we were thinking for 22, we would need somewhere around 10 to 11%. And I think the approved rate increase was 6.2%. And as we look at our, our financial performance, uh, for the year for 2022 on a run rate basis, we are seeing, uh, losses in, in that market, in that segment. And we anticipate that that loss by the end of the year will be about minus four and a half. So that, that represents the underwriting in 2022. So if we take just a, a run rate trend of five or five, I think we're using five and a half against that, the inadequacy in those current rates, that gets us pretty close to the 11% that we filed. So that's kind of a, a short, high-level story on that. With regards to some of the other drivers, um, that Brad mentioned, morbidity is one for individual blue choice. Historically, in the last few years, what we've seen is as we've moved through open enrollment, um, what we had seen in prior years was that the sacred people were actually leaving and that what was left was slightly healthier. Uh, in fact, last year, that was, was the tune of about three to 4%. This year, what we're seeing is that the sacred people actually stuck around and the healthier people left, which is not surprising coming out of 2021. And that actually, uh, put upward pressure on our rates by about 2.3%. So that's the individual blue choice story. Uh, individual PPO, this is the one that has the 25.9% rate increase. So I want to address some of the dynamics around that. Uh, if we look at the, the first thing I'll say is that last year, we actually had a minus 12.6% rate increase approved. And this year it's whipsawed to a 25.9. But just to get everybody grounded, if we actually compare, uh, to 2023 and all the way back to 2018, pre 1332, even with a 25.9% uh, percent rate increase in 23, we would still see a 20% reduction from the highs of 2018. So this still is lower, um, than the pre 1332 waiver. Really that, to, to sum it up, the real driver of what is driving the 25.9 is something Brad alluded to, and that is comparing the, uh, the actual impact of reinsurance to what was assumed in prior rate filings. As Brad said, we are just starting to get, you know, full completed for a couple of years' experience of the 1332 waiver. And what we found was that the assumptions we had made in our prior filings were too aggressive. Um, so we had assumed, uh, based off some actual analysis that we would get about, you know, 59% uh, reinsurance. And it turns out it's about 49%. And so what ends up happening is that leverage is up the member premium sub- substantially. And we'll be working with, with Brad's team to, to review that and to give them the data. But if I had to summarize the driver, I believe it is the reinsurance. Second to reinsurance is the risk adjustment. And again, in a, in a pandemic, there's a enormous amount of uncertainty. Uh, and what we saw in 2020, which was the, the base period last year, was that there were significant risk shifts among the various segments. And basically, we had assumed that the PPO folks would risk shift the rest of the population. So we overstated of, of risk adjustment in last year's rates. And that was part of what drove down our rate increase of minus 12. And since that didn't happen, now we're seeing it come back and that's contributing about seven and a half percent to the 25% increase. So if you want to break apart the 25.9%, it's really mostly the reinsurance factor and then secondarily risk adjustment. So that's the, the story in individual. Let me pause there before I get into small group. And see if Brad has any questions or if the actuaries have any questions on individual. If not, I can keep going and, and if they have them at the end, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd say keep going for now, Pete.
Okay, sure. Um, small group, um, small group is really a tale of two segments. The, the HMO segment is where we filed a 13.1% increase. That, that is the majority of the membership at about 176,000 members. Small group PPO is a, a moderate 4.7% increase on 20,000 members. And the story there is really on trend. So just for context, the small group HMO, we have not had a rate increase up until this year higher than 5% since 2015, when it was 5.8. So this has been extremely moderate, low single-digit increases for several years. It's been a great story. Um, part of the, really what's driving the 13.1 is, uh, is the claims trends. And we could talk a little bit about in particular what within those claims trends. But a dynamic that we've seen here that we know is others are seeing across the industry is primarily this came in 2021 with higher costs. But we, you know, we were reviewing these 2022 rates in August. So why didn't we see it in August? And the reason is, we've seen a massive slowdown in claim payments from providers. And as we've talked to providers, what we found out is the great resignation is really in What we found out is the great resignation is really impacting them in their administrative ability to submit claims. So what we saw was in October and December of two thousand twenty one, we saw massive prior period adjustments in our claims. And especially in small group that really drove up our claim or observed trends by two to three points. Um, so this would not have been captured in the two thousand twenty two rates because we hadn't seen it by August. And this resulted in us filing for third quarter twenty two rate changes of three and a half percent. Um, for small group blue choice to try to capture some of that. But some of the dynamics we're seeing on where the trends are are coming in. Um, it's pretty interesting. A big one is in telehealth for mental health. And so when we see brick and mortar mental health drop. Um, we see telehealth, mental health spike, and we knew this, we knew we were tracking telehealth by CPD code in the top nine, nine out of ten. Were for mental health. But if you look at the um, like a two year kegger on that, it's over twenty percent. For outpatient mental health and that's probably it. That's probably contributing a point to the overall trend, just that one thing. The other dynamic we're seeing is an example. Is during the pandemic, we saw a shift from inpatient surgeries to inventory surgery center outpatient surgeries. And the key there is that. The inpatient is, you know, Maryland is a global budget state and the inpatient is regulated. And we saw a lot of shifts of surgeries to the unregulated uh inventory surgery centers. And as you know, even if that's cheaper, we don't get the full dollar reduction on the inpatient because of the global budgeting works. And so. We're seeing that that really was uh when we looked at it, it was really hips and knees going into the ASCs. Um, and the kegger on that is is huge. It's it's like, you know, over twenty five percent um on a PNP basis. And so there's some, there's underlying dynamics of how care is being delivered that the that was impacted by the pandemic, whether it be. Mental health increasing in telehealth or whether it be moving to the unregulated ASCs. We're also seeing. A lot of professional services come back. Um, you know, specialty. Uh, is coming back in twenty one and we're seeing those PMPMs continue into twenty two. So it doesn't look like it was just deferred care. Coming back on a one time basis. We're actually seeing those PMPMs carrying into twenty two at a higher level. Generally speaking, we're trying to figure out, I know the the industry is saying this is we tend to be seeing higher morbidity in the same population. And so I don't know if this is due to the, what we call the time bomb effect of missing cancer screenings. Uh, we do see enough taken cancers, but overall, we're we are seeing small group. Um, small group blue choice morbidity deteriorating. And one, one more comment on that was really an inpatient where we saw inpatients PNP spike at the end of of twenty one. Contrary to that, on small group PPO, surprisingly, we're seeing a drop in the inpatient PNP. And that's putting a dampening impact on trends. So we, the end of nineteen, that PNP was about a hundred and seventeen dollars PNP. Most recent month, it's about ninety four dollars. And so it's it's come down. We're looking into seeing what's driving that, but that is a dampening impact. On trend from PPO and that's helping keep that rate increase down to four point seven percent. So that's the story on uh small group. I could talk a little bit about ARPA and COVID if you like, Brad, and then. Uh, pause for work and pause here for questions. I'll leave it up to you.
Yeah, why don't you finish up and then we'll ask all our questions at the end.
Sounds good. So um for ARPA, um obviously a lot of uncertainty here. Here, I agree with you that generally speaking, the anti-selection principle applies and you would expect this subsidies decrease that anti-selection would cause. The healthier people to leave. We are trying to dig into this data per your request. And we're, you know, we're we're gonna have to um spend a little bit of time. We don't have it directly at the FPL level. We can see our APDC and our non-APDC members, so we are working to develop to get a try to get a clear picture. What I can tell you. Is that we did see a shift. So in January. Of two thousand twenty one, we about forty eight percent of our individual mem- blue choice members were at APDC. That had increased to fifty three percent by July and April was the implementation of ARPA. Um, and it looks like, at least at a high level, we have to confirm this, that it was simply a shift from our existing members. From non-APDC to APDC. It was almost the the drop, it was about the same total membership, but just the APDC and non-APDC flipped. Um, about six thousand members. Now, that doesn't, obviously, that doesn't necessarily mean that those were the, those were existing members who moved. To subsidies. It would make sense, but clearly there could be some terminations and some new additions there. Um, so we're we're looking into that. Uh, to try to get a better sense of it. But generally speaking, I would agree with you that if the subsidies are not uh extended. We will see the healthier members leave as the sicker members are are more inclined to to retain coverage. And and so we, that's something we'll have to look at. But again, uh, not too much detail right now, because we're still trying to tease apart the data to identify the numbers. On COVID. You know, obviously, everything you said is true. Um, we agree with uh COVID has really kind of shaken everything up. And poured it all back out differently. Um, you know, just to get grounded, we are seeing about four to six percent of our total expense as COVID costs. Split between the categories you mentioned. Um, interestingly enough, it's not unusual for our testing costs to be higher than our care costs. Uh, we also see a lot more variation month to month in our care costs. I think in individual, that was like thirty five dollars PNP for for January where we had the Omicron spike dropping all the way down to three dollars now. Testing seems to be much more consistent. Um, one thing we've seen is, you know, in Maryland, everyone who went into a facility for. For any procedure uh had to be COVID tested. And so we, it kind of kind of became a systemic part of the process. Um, it really going forward, there's a lot of uncertainty around how what prevalence COVID would had. I know there was an interview that. The Secretary of Health and Medical Services gave on Friday where he expected a strong resurgence in the fall. Um, I I have been able to dive in to see what he's looking at, uh, but he made that comment. Uh, we also see from a vaccine standpoint, like you said, a lot of those aren't hitting our claim record because they were done at the free centers. To the extent that the public health emergency expires, that those costs will fall to us. Uh, about a week ago, the FDA mentioned that Pfizer is moving to a BA five and BA four variant specific. Backs booster vaccine that will be available in October. So we're keeping an eye on that. Is that that may, depending on where the public health emergency falls. May fall to to our bottom line. Um, again, a lot of uncertainty. If we get a spike in. In a variant that comes through and we get a spike in cases, we would expect testing to go up. I agree with you. I think care probably be on the lower side, given that these variants seem to be less virulent. Um, also, you mentioned the over the counter. Right now, we have not seen a material uptake on that. But obviously, if we get uh, you know, a widespread variant that and people, that becomes more. People become more aware that we could expect an uptake there as well, while still retaining the the PCR tests for anyone going into a facility. We would anticipate that would continue. I don't, I don't think the the facilities would accept an over the the counter test um when someone was going into the the hospital. So. Um, a lot of uncertainty going forward with COVID. Uh, we'll have to wait and see how it plays out in the fall. And close my comments.
Thanks very much, Pete.
Sure.
My main question for you i- is around trend and and divergent. Observations in individual and small group that that more than every any year in the past. That there's really a significant difference in the data between those two market segments. And and you had mentioned some things in small group, like the, you know, the the shift. To telehealth and the increase in in mental health utilization. And and I I would have expected to see that in individuals as well. And I guess. I- is that not the case? Are are you not seeing those those larger utilization pattern changes in individual?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, I think we are, we are seeing the telehealth across the board. I think part of this may be. Um, where small group blue choice is coming from, from a morbidity standpoint compared to the individual blue choice where it's already coming from. And so I think and we're looking into this and we'll certainly have more detail that we'll be able to give to you in the in the rate review process. But the the going theory right now is that basically you're talking about small group blue choice, uh, individual blue choice, obviously. Um, I would think has a a slightly higher morbidity than our small group blue choice. And so you may have slightly healthier members, you know, they're at work um versus individual blue choice where they don't necessarily are aren't at work. Um, maybe uh interacting with with uh morbidity they haven't had before. And like the example I give is on the inpatient. A hospital is a great example where we saw that jump from, you know, about seventy five dollars PNP to over eighty five dollars PNP by the end of. Twenty one for small group blue choice, whereas we don't see the a similar increase in hospitalizations for the individual side. Um, in fact, they've been relatively flat. So again, don't have all the answers right now. Um, I think there are some systemic changes like the ASCs and the telehealth. But some of the underlying morbidity changes we're seeing in small group don't seem to be happening in individual.
All right, thanks. And and I agree. It's something we definitely want to keep digging into.
Absolutely.
Um, I I had additional morbidity question about about something you didn't mention, and and that's the Medicaid um. Population. Do you have any insight or expectations about what the relative morbidity for Medicaid disenrollers will be? Now now that you have some MCO business and and data to dig into or or from outside data, do you have expectations there?
I don't. Uh, it's a good call out. Um, you know, the, I think the ARPA stuff is something that we're now that we've got the the main file put together. Something we're gonna have to dive into. Um. It's hard to say. Generally speaking, you would expect from associate economic standpoint that those folks might have a higher um risk burden. Uh, that might be my assumption going in. Um, you know, we may be able to take a look at our Maryland Medicaid population. Uh, to see if we can try to tease that out. Uh, but generally speaking, I would imagine that that probably would. Uh, slightly worsen her pool.
All right, thank you. Um, I think those were my questions. Adam, did you have anything additional you wanted to ask?
No, I'm okay. Thank you, Brad.
Thanks. How about you, Henry?
Then we'll get to face.
All right. Thank you, Pete. Appreciate it.
Right. Thank you, Brad. Thanks, Commissioner.
You're welcome. Um, one of the things that I will mention to folks that are listening in is that. The MIA's actuaries, those were very, very detailed process. So once the filings are made, there are a series of questions that get asked. Um, and so over the course of the last two months, our actuaries have been posting questions and getting data and going back and forth. Um, with the company actuary. So the fact that they don't have questions today doesn't mean they have, they don't have questions. And that they haven't been asking questions and reviewing data. What it means is that they have no additional questions. Based on what um is being presented today. So just wanted to to clarify that. Y'all probably knew that, but. Um, this explains why you're not necessarily hearing a lot of questions in today's hearing. Um, so with that, then let me move to our next um speaker. Who is uh Stephen Chiang from Kaiser Permanente.
Thanks, Kathleen. Hi, everyone. I'm Stephen Chong. I'm a actuary associate for Kaiser. And today I'll speak on our individual and small group rate filings. Uh, so I'll start with the individual filing first. Uh, this filing represents eighteen plans offered both on and off exchange. With uh minor changes to keep plans within the appropriate actual value range, which was updated for twenty twenty three. Uh, we did add one new plan to the portfolio, which is a silver off exchange only plan. And this is because the off exchange has an additional two percent uh for the de minimis. Uh, these plans currently service approximately sixty three thousand members throughout Maryland. For twenty twenty three, we have currently filed for an average rate increase of seven point two percent. Though depending on the exact plan, rate changes may vary from a minimum of uh one point seven percent decrease. Up to a thirteen point four percent increase. The state-based reinsurance program has had a significant impact on our rates. Uh, without this program. Our estimate is that the twenty twenty three rates would need to be thirty to forty percent higher than filed. Uh, now I'll talk about our small group market. Our filing represents sixty plans and this includes both on and off exchange. And two different provider networks. For twenty twenty three, uh, the changes we made to the portfolio is removing. Our bronze added choice plans, our POS plans. These plans are currently service approximately ten thousand members throughout Maryland. Um, we initially filed for an average rate increase of nine percent for twenty twenty three. Uh, these rate changes vary from a one point four percent decrease to fourteen point six percent increase. And depending on the plan and when the group renews. Um, in twenty twenty one, Kaiser Maryland saw COVID related claims in the ACA markets of around five percent of total claims. And this includes vaccination. So for our vaccination and testing. Claims added together would account for around two percent of that and the COVID care would be that remaining three percent roughly. Uh, the impact of future reductions in COVID overall was considered for the trend assumptions for twenty twenty three. And our fall trend is around one percent lower compared to a trend reflecting no COVID impact. Uh, we assume that utilization will decline closer to pre-COVID levels. And that some level of COVID costs will become endemic. We expect virtually no deferred care will be remaining in twenty twenty three. Um, that concludes my statements and I'm open to any questions.
Thanks, Steven. Um. So I I I wanted to. Just highlight your statement about introducing the the new off exchange silver plan. Um. So so pre- previously, we we discussed how CMS was narrowing the ranges from minus five to to minus two. But but in the individual on exchange silver market, it's been narrowed even more. Um, so an on exchange silver plan. Ki- cannot be below seventy percent at at all. It has to be in the range of seventy to seventy two percent. Um, and and CMS partially did that to help increase the amount of APDC that that will be available. Um, but but they they've left the range at at sixty eight to seventy two percent for off exchange. Um, so so you know, th- th- that that that's the the driver of that off exchange. Um, silver plan and and you know, I I just want to highlight that al- already today. An off exchange silver plan is significantly cheaper than an on exchange silver plan uh that is very similar because of the CSR loading. And this is gonna drive that spread even further that off exchange, there there's gonna be a silver plan with with somewhat higher cost shares. But even lower premium. Um, and 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 you know, the the, you know, in in the individual marketplace for for silver specifically. The consumer should look off exchange because because there's a difference and and that for all the other metal levels, there there is no difference between on and off exchange. If you buy gold or if you buy bronze, it's the same, but but this uh the the silver plans. You know, there there is meaningful difference on and off exchange and there's gonna be more meaningful difference in the future. Um, so I I know that was more of a comment than a question, but but eh, did did I, was I accurate in my description there, Steven?
That's right, Brad. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um. I guess my other question regarding COVID decline, since you're lowering your trend by one percent, whi- which compounded over two years. Is a two percent reduction in in claims du- due to a reduction in in COVID costs. Um, I I I guess, you know, gi- given what other people have said. And and you know, the the concern about the possibility of new COVID variants and new surges. And 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 these other types of COVID costs in the future, i- is there any concern that this could be, you know? That 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 things could turn out worse than expected. And and if so, you know. Do do do, a- are you confident about your financial position? I- i- if if COVID claims do turn out higher than you're expecting and don't decrease by that two percent. But but stay the same or or slightly increase.
Right, uh, there there is definitely a concern around that and I think that is partly why we've been examining our our margins, our trends. Um, but it's pretty unpredictable for now. We, that is something we're monitoring and um. Uh, I think in our trend assumption, we, that's that's why we are looking at with COVID versus without COVID and how that impacts particularly our inpatient trend. Um, but yeah, that's just not something I have an answer for at the moment.
All right, thank you. Um. I also have the same question about if you would have any insight on the the relative morbidity of of Medicaid enrollees. Uh, I I'm not expecting you can answer it off the cuff, but you know, K- Kaiser i- is both a Medicaid MCO and and an individual ACA char- carrier. And if you have any data analysis that you could do to compare the claims. And i- if you have any data analysis that you could do to compare the claims between the two pools, you know, normalize for age, obviously. But but, eh, you know, a- a- any any kind of data that you can provide the MIA to help us gauge that relative morbidity. Would be useful. Um, and 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 so I I I would just give you, ask if you can go back. You know, I expect that you don't personally work with the MCO data. But but i- if that is available and some kind of comparison could be made, I I I think that would be extremely helpful.
Sure. Yeah, I can follow up with you on that.
All right, thank you. Um, Adam or Henry, do you have any additional questions for Stephen?
I'm good. Thank you, Brad.
All right. Thank you very much, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thanks. And so now uh we'll turn to our last carrier, United Healthcare, and um Mr. Morgan. Uh, is on and is Ms. Simon on as well?
Yeah, I know she's on the call. Yep.
I have you both listed, so welcome. Happy to hear from you.
Yep. Yeah, good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Breen and the Maryland Insurance Administration for the opportunity to present today. My name's Ryan Morgan. I'm an actuary with United Healthcare. And I'm here to discuss the twenty twenty-two, or sorry, twenty twenty-three small group and individual rates United Healthcare has filed with the MIA. I'll actually do the opposite of the last couple speakers and start with small group. Uh, United Healthcare continues to offer small group policies on four legal entities. A United Healthcare Insurance Company and Mamzy Life and Health Company, those are two PPO entities. And then also Optimum Choice Incorporated and United Healthcare of the Mid-Atlantic. Those are two HMO entities. Across all four entities, we're proposing a hundred and three unique small group plans in twenty-three. That span all metal levels, eleven platinum, forty-nine gold, thirty-eight silver, and five bronze. Approximately one-third of these plans are available both on and off exchange, and the rest are available off exchange only. In the small group market for twenty-three, we submitted our rate filings back in May. And had a kind of divergent increases, uh, three point five percent for United Health Insurance Company. Three point one percent for Mamzy Life and Health Company, ten point one percent for Optimum Choice. And ten point two percent of Free United Healthcare of the Mid-Atlantic. And let me be clear, as others have said too, um, these figures represent an average rate change. Um, so the rate change for any specific group could be higher or lower depending on a variety of factors. One of the primary drivers of our requested rate change was our trend rate. And as we do every year, we conducted a full review of all the components that contribute to trend. And using the most recent information available at the time of the filing. We analyze unit costs, utilization of services, and also the impact of deductible leveraging. And all these components were looked at inpatient outpatient professional uh for pharmacy and for other services as well. So based on all this together, we filed a trend rate of seven point eight percent, which was reflected in our filing. That's pretty con-. Uh, pretty consistent with the what we filed for the last couple of years as well. Um, experience in our twenty-one for us was generally favorable, especially on those PPO entities. Uh, which explains the lower than trend level increases we're seeking on those. On our two HMO entities, we were significant risk adjustment payers. So when you kind of net that out, the experience with the risk adjustment um payment. Those were a little bit higher, and that partially explains why we're seeking a somewhat higher increase on those two entities. Then turning to the individual market, United Healthcare is continuing to offer policies. On the individual exchange after re-entering the market in twenty twenty-one. We are selling plans statewide under the Optimum Choice License, so just that one license. Um, we're offering twelve individual HMO plans. Uh, for gold, for silver, and for bronze, and all of the associated cost sharing reduction silver variance as well. We submitted our twenty-three filing with an average increase of eight point seven percent for individual block of business. Um, and again, that will vary based on plan selection and area. Uh, similar to last year, we don't yet have a fully credible enforced Maryland block from which to develop our pricing. So we've utilized data and experience of Wakely Consulting Group to build our Maryland pricing portfolio. Premium rates were developed using a blend of our twenty-one experience. And a rate manual built from Wakely's WACA database of individual ACA data. Rates were also informed by the knowledge of Maryland Marketplace from individual rate filings, risk adjustment reporting, and other publicly available materials. The primary drivers of our increase, a lot of things that have been mentioned by others on this uh call already. The um application of initial year of trend, obviously, expected changes to market morbidity as a result of ARPA. And anticipated changes in market morbidity due to individuals entering the risk pool. As a result of Medicaid eligibility redeterminations. And lastly, our rates also reflect an increase. To our average actual value following changes to the allowable de minimis AV range. So hopefully, this summary of our twenty twenty-three small group and individual rate filings has been helpful. At this time, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have regarding small group rate filings. And Catherine Simon is available to answer about individual rates. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Um. My question was regarding your trend analysis. Can you can you clarify for your smugger trend analysis? Are you using solely Maryland data? Are you using a a a national small group data set? Or what data set are you using with with your primary trend analysis?
Right, so it's based on, um, yeah, not. It's, yeah, it's not just kind of, because we, I think we've had this before in prior years in our review where. Um, you're kind of looking at like a just a year over year, and we kind of have a broader view. With contracts, changes, and so, um, but yeah, it's it's Maryland data, but it's not just specifically small group. It's kind of taking all that into consideration.
So you're also using large group data to get the largest exposure possible, I guess?
Right, correct.
All right, but but you are using Maryland data. I mean, I think that our our main concern i- is. You know, the hospital trends and and the HS CRC sets the update factors for the global budget in Maryland.
Right.
If your hospital analysis, you know, is reflecting other states, that that might not be i- indicative of Maryland, and and we just want to make sure that.
Yeah.
The hospital trends are consistent with with Maryland's hospital rate setting.
Yeah, correct.
All right, thanks. Um, a- a- and do you set the trend by service category? Or or are you just setting one overall trend?
Yeah, and you can see in our filing, there's detail based on each service category, and then those are weighted together.
Okay.
There's a kind of a summary exhibit that shows you all the the breakouts there. Yep.
All right, thank you very much. And I guess in the individual market, um, are are you projecting additional en- enrollment growth? Or are you projecting that that y- you've kind of reached your your steady state?
We are projecting some enrollment growth. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but we do project that we will continue to grow.
All right, thank you. Um. And and on the individual market, you know, I'll I'll know, we we put in an objection recently a- about updating for for risk adjustment. Um, actuals, um, you know, y- you were projecting that you you were going to be a payer and 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 that came to fruition. But but I think you paid a little bit less than than you were originally projecting, so so we asked you to update that. And you know, obviously, that was twenty twenty-one, um, actuals, but we expect that that your your model would would flow that through. To twenty twenty-three. Um, a- and you know, I I I guess I I just want to make sure we're on. On the same page there, that that, you know, the 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 risk adjustment for for twenty twenty-three would be impacted by twenty twenty-one's actuals.
So we, we're still doing that analysis to determine if it will be material on our twenty-three rating. Um, we are kind of anticipating some change in health status that we might not be quite as large of a payer as we are now. Um, so we we will uh keep you posted on that, but we'll have results on that soon.
Yeah, and I actually think that comment was probably germane to small group as well, because I think we did have a little bit of favorability. There as well, relative to what we put in our initial pricing in terms of risk adjustment actuals.
All right, w- was that for the 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 ones that were not payers for for the PPO a- and and. Point of service entities?
I think it was a little bit across the board. It may varied a little bit by entity, but I don't think it was, it wasn't just like one entity jumped off the page. It was, it was pretty consistent across.
All right, thanks for that clarification. Um, yeah, uh, we'll be sort of look into that w- when you send us the updated a- analysis and and surf.
Yeah, I think we did that on Friday. So yeah, just it's late Friday, so pretty fresh. But yeah, you should have that.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Um, that's everything I had, Adam or Henry. Any questions?
Good too. Thanks.
I'm okay. Thanks, Brad.
All right, thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
So thank you for uh to the companies who have kind of walked us through the reasoning. Behind their uh rate increases or a rate increased requests. And we have three individuals who have signed up in advance to speak today. Uh, first, we will hear from Stephanie Clapper, who is the Deputy Director of Maryland Citizens Health Initiative Education Fund. Ms. Clapper, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for the opportunity to comment today. Um, I am from Maryland Citizens Health Initiative. Our mission is quality, affordable healthcare for all Marylanders. Um, and and first, I want to thank the Maryland Insurance Administration for its role in the current affordability worker from Maryland Health Benefit Exchange. Um, I have great hopes for that work group and what will come out of it. Um, I also want to thank you for, again, making this uh hearing virtual and continuing to make your. Uh, hearings virtual so that they are accessible for um as many Marylanders as possible. Thank you for continuing to do that. Uh, so, um, we're really thankful that the Maryland General Assembly and Governor Hogan. Um, both created the reinsurance program during the twenty eighteen legislative session, and that it is being extended through action from the twenty twenty-two legislative session. To help prevent premiums for skyrocketing. Um, and considering the proposed rates, we encourage the Maryland Insurance Administration to continue to make protecting consumers. And reducing the high cost of premiums of top priorities. And just looking at the broader picture, we think that it's important to continue to encourage as many young and healthy individuals to enroll in coverage as possible. Um, the youth subsidies pilot program is one of the very important tools in order to do that. And we heard today that um in light of the fact that ARPA subsidies uh are are in danger. That it it's an even more important tool um in in order to help protect uh young adults from from those rate increases. And and from um from them leaving the marketplace. Programs like the Easy Enrollment Program to to help people enroll in health coverage through their state tax returns are also important. And and we hope to build off of things like that. Uh, and talking about small employers, um, we think that making coverage affordable for small employers is key. Uh, and so we're excited about the Maryland Health Benefit Exchange convening a subsidies work group for small employers this summer. And and hope that good things come out of there. And finally, uh, you know, as we're thinking about these rating uh requests. We're looking at this all against the backdrop of skyrocketing drug costs, which do affect rates. And so we hope that the Prescription Drug Affordability Board um will be able to help address this in the future. So again, thank you for the opportunity comment and for doing everything in your power to help bring down premiums for Marylanders across the state. And moving us all clo- closer to having quality, affordable healthcare for all.
Thank you, Ms. Clapper, for those comments. I I appreciate it, and um I, your your words of that. We do everything we can possibly do and responsibly do to keep rates um in check. Is something that I can tell you that our actuaries take to heart. So, thank you for your comments today. We'd now like to hear from Mr. Atlas, Bob Atlas, who is the CEO of the Maryland Hospital Association.
Hi, um, I think my video has been turned off by. Your guys.
Great. Straightless, so you can.
All right, there we go.
There you go. Yeah, good.
Thank you. Um, good morning, Commissioner Breen and colleagues. I'm Bob Atlas, President and CEO of the Maryland Hospital Association. My organization represents all sixty of Maryland's hospitals and health systems, and we're proud of the fact that all of our hospitals, except one small specialty hospital. Operate on a not-for-profit basis. Come to you uh before you today to express our concerns about the premium rate increases sought by carriers in the individual and small group markets. I'm not going to speak about any specific carriers or products pricing. But rather about the pattern evident in the entire set of requests taken together. Collectively, in the individual market with uh two hundred and thirty-seven thousand covered lives, the carriers are seeking your approval. To hike premiums an average of more than eleven percent weighted by population. In the small group market with two hundred and forty-eight thousand lives, the carriers want to raise premiums an average of almost eleven percent. These cost increases are unacceptable. For affected individuals and small employers, of which my own organization happens to be one. What's more, these increases simply are not justified. Just a few weeks ago, the Health Services Cost Review Commission voted to allow Maryland hospitals a total revenue update. For the year start that started on July one of just three point two-five percent per capita. This isn't just an adjustment to unit prices, it's an adjustment to total hospital revenues. So utilization trends don't change what this will amount to in terms of revenue for hospitals. This means insurers know their cost for hospital services over the next twelve months will grow by this small percentage and no more. And as you know, hospitals' costs comprise the largest single line item in health insurers' benefit costs. Can it possibly be that the insurers' non-hospital spending is growing at such a phenomenal rate? That the net result becomes eleven percent? Their own assumptions don't show as much, nor do their medical loss ratios. You also know that growth in Maryland hospital revenues is effectively capped. By the terms of the state's total cost of care agreement with the federal government. We know that very clearly. And so even though hospitals are seeing double-digit cost inflation, we saw it an update of just three point eight percent. Modest as that request was, and notwithstanding, the commercial carriers benefit greatly from our system of all payer rates. And on that one, I just want to note a remark that Brad made earlier. About the average cost of COVID hospitalization being thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's the lowest in the country according to Fair Health, half, less than half the national average. So notwithstanding these these benefits that the commercial carriers get from our all-payer rate system. Representatives of the health insurance industry spoke at the HSCRC meeting in opposition. To our request for a three point eight percent boost to hospital revenues. And in doing so, they asserted that employers and consumers cannot bear the added cost burden. Healthcare affordability is under constant threat in our nation and in our state, especially at this time of high inflation generally. Let's please make sure that the insurance carriers shoulder their share of our collective obligation to Marylanders. That they can afford to get the care that they need. Thank you. Now, if I may, just extend my remarks just a bit. Based on something that was said earlier, there was discussion about the Maryland Medicaid program. Uh, with the end of the public health emergency. And um. Uh, the fact is that uh Maryland Department of Health. Uh, leadership of the Medicaid Agency has stated publicly. That they don't expect the public health emergency to end uh until at least the end of this year, number one. Number two, that they plan to take the full twelve months uh time that the federal government is allowing. To do the eligibility redeterminations. So they have told us not to expect very many Medicaid enrollees to uh drop out of Medicaid during. The next calendar year and because that matters to us because of its impact on uncompensated care for hospitals. Uh, it matters as well to the insurers because of what's been discussed relative to um. Uh, possible uh transfers to the individual market. So um, I think that that, you can treat that as a neutral impact for calendar twenty-three. And that will conclude everything I have to say. Happy to take questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Atlas. I I appreciate it. At through the N I C, we are also keeping very close watch on both of those issues. Our information is the same, that it's in all likelihood the federal emergency will continue in effect to the end of the year. And we are coordinating with both MHBE and MDH Medicaid about the roll-off. Uh, timing and planning, um, because in addition, of course, to people who will come into potentially the insured market from Medicaid. We have to be very concerned about the people who will um then need vet sub-products and make sure that they get. What our legislature, um, Governor Hogan proposed last year that we but and that went into effect. The idea of being able to. that we, and that went into effect, the idea of being able to have an additional time period to get guarantee issue products. So we're watching that very closely and coordinating very closely with MDH and on the insurance side, the MHBE. So I want to thank you for those comments, we are coming up against time, so we're not going to do questions. But I do want to give Ms. Kaufman an opportunity to speak on behalf of MedKai.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and I've also, my video was turned off by your staff.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can put your video on, I can't do that remotely, so. Just choose, start video.
It, I've tried that, and it keeps, I keep getting a little box that says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Okay, try it now, there we go, okay, sorry about that.
So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, just for the record, I'm Dana Kaufman. I'm here on behalf of MedKai, the State's Medical Society, I'm with the law firm of Schwartz, Metz, Wise, and Kaufman. And I want to again, thank you for this opportunity. I don't want to repeat, and I do acquiesce to the statements that were made from Mr. Atlas, especially as it relates to the update factor that was given to the hospitals of only 3.2, 3.25%. When you take that and, you know, put it next to these rate increases. But really, what I want to hone in on is the real experience that our patients have with these rates. We continue to talk in percentages, but access and affordability are two very different components. And when you look at the affordability of what is coming out of the pockets of individuals because of these rate increases, it is staggering. Just for example, and I'm looking at the two plans that are basically the, that have the highest enrollees, and they're the Care First Blue Choice Plans. If you look at the individual market and the average premium cost that's being requested, it relates to, in the bronze plan, it's $116 a month change. It's basically in the hundred, low hundreds for each of the medal plans in the individual market. And that's for the family of four. If you turn then to the small group market, a family of four, when there are 40-year-olds as the adults, you're talking about $173 per month increase. And we do not see a justification in what has been filed for $173 per month increase. Especially when you take into consideration the fact that these same individuals are dealing with unprecedented inflationary costs, which the rate increases are higher than inflation right now, or at least requested. Gas, food, these rate increases will send, and I have one of these plans, so I almost speak from experience right now. These rate increases per month will either send individuals out of insurance, and they won't be able to afford Medicaid because they're not going to fit into that enrollment category. Or they're going to have to switch from either a silver or gold plan to a bronze plan or a different plan to get their premiums lower. But in that case, you have a higher deductible, and we haven't talked about that. And we haven't, you know, these plans are being said that they're not changing benefits. But when you look at the cost of the deductible, the lowest bronze plan, I think the deductible is either between 6100 and 8250. So that means that if you get sick, it goes to your deductible. People have insurance because they get sick. And if people end up having to go to higher plans, you're going to see medical debt also increase, especially under the constraints of this economy. And again, we have not seen anything in these rate analysis or the rate justifications that have been submitted. MedKai will be submitting a more detailed letter by August 12. I do want to point out one comment because there was a comment made earlier about provider reimbursement. But I think it's also important to point out, and it's one topic that is never talked about. Maryland has one of the lowest physician reimbursements in the commercial market. According to the Healthcare Institute, the average reimbursement per Medicare in the commercial market is 140%. Maryland ranks the third lowest, only in front of Delaware and Alabama. I'm going to repeat that, Alabama, because Maryland is one of the top 10 wealthiest states, and Alabama is one of the top 10 poorest states, or I should say lowest poorest state. So the rise in cost, if it's not coming from the hospitals, it's definitely not coming from the physician reimbursement. So we are very curious to see really what the driving factors in. And the last point that I am just going to make is, these rates, the small group market, they have had rate increases each year, even during COVID, when claims were at a historic low. So we do want to know, where's the offset? If claims were at the historic low in 20 and 21, and there has been news articles that have talked about high profits, where's the offset? So we think that there's a lot of questions that have not been answered, that needs to be answered for our consumers. So we don't actually destabilize these two markets because of these premium increases. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we will be submitting a more in-depth letter, thank you.
Well, thank you, and we'll look forward to getting the letter that includes some of your actuarial analysis. Because obviously, what my team is focused on is, you know, the actuarial analysis and the data. We are infinitely mindful of the impact on consumers, that's why we present data in a way that we can't address every person and every plan. We do try to identify representative plans, and we work very closely with MHBE in developing plans that provide value, such as some of the bronze value plan that are intended to address concerns around deductible. So, but we will look forward to hearing your more detailed comments when you, when you present them. We are well past the time for the end of the hearing, which was to go until 11:30. So I think that that wraps up our comments from folks who signed up in advance. And I understand from Mr. I that you did not see anyone who was looking to make additional comments.
This is true, yes.
So I think what we'll do is, we have indicated where you can submit comments. The comment period is open until August 12. And so anybody who has been on here today is more than welcome to provide additional comments in writing by sending them to the MIA. And all comments will be made, will be made public, and you can access materials. There you go, there's the slide information. And in the chat, Mr. I has put where you can go to access materials. So with that, I want to thank my team for the very thorough job that they are doing in getting and analyzing information and data. And I want to thank the companies for the time they spent today to give us a sense of what's driving their changes. And certainly to all of our commenters who have all pointed out very important considerations around, you know, that range from what are the, what are the cost drivers? And what is the impact on individual consumers who ultimately have to pay these differentials? And on whom the sense of actuarially justified or not doesn't, doesn't help them pay the bill. So I think we get that and understand that, and I want to thank people for pointing that out. So with that, unless Brad, you have anything else, I think we're going to close out the hearing.
Yeah, I don't have anything else, I think we can close things out.
Great, well, thank you again, everyone, this hearing will be available on our website. Thank you, take care, have a good day, goodbye.
Thanks.